Okay, so can I have a motion to enter the meeting here? Nate, second Rebecca, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Next on the agenda, we have the consent items. That includes the minutes of the July 27th meeting, the CPSC and CSC recommendations, and the personnel action. Can I have a motion to approve the consent items? Ben, second Blanca. Any questions or comments?
I just have one comment, I guess, or maybe question to Dr. Wiles. So I know we're approving a bunch of fall sports coaches. And then, if I remember correctly, we're going to kind of wait and see what happens with COVID and what's happening in, I should say, the county, and then determine if we need to.
At this point, we're planning on starting our fall sports season on August 23rd. If anything changes, we'll respond, but at this point, we're going to follow the protocols and get the season started.
Okay, great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Passes it, oh, okay. Passes seven zero. Thanks Kelly. Next on the agenda, we have information items. First, we have curriculum and instruction.
And I will jump in here for Damian.
Thank you.
The first, actually, the only topic for tonight is summer curriculum projects. This summer, like every other, we've been very busy with summer curriculum projects and required training. The time spent working collaboratively with colleagues to advance curriculum and programs is always beneficial. Activities completed thus far include a calculus curriculum modification, supo-forensics course updates, health sciences, nursing course updates, physical therapy course updates, project lead the way, required training, AP calculus, health maturity unit for FMS, sixth grade six through eight vertical math articulation, facts curriculum alignment, introduction to human communication with civil conversations, GHS reading retrofit to support identified students and address literacy gaps created by the COVID-19 pandemic, New York State SEAL of civic readiness, school to work, planning placement and coordination, Gilderland High School turnkey training, the creation and use of diagnostic assessments, elementary general music curriculum updates, Black History in America, new course development, and last but not least, engineering design and development core training. So, very busy this summer.
Great, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next on the agenda, we have school business. Neil.
Thank you. One item this evening, it's to announce that Department of Agriculture is extending previous waivers to allow free meals to all students 18 and under with no eligibility requirements through the 2021-22 school year. The current waiver was set to expire on September 30th, 2021, so that's good news for all of our parents and guardians and students.
Neil, I don't know, okay. How does this affect our cafeteria funding and the money that we have available? I mean, we usually end up with money and that pays the salaries of people, right? What are we doing about that? Does this?
Well, now, we're going to have the Department of Agriculture.
Will be taking care of that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's included with this?
The meals will be free under that program, yes. So they'll cover some of those costs.
Okay, so we won't be losing the money that we usually make on it?
No, I mean, we'll be getting revenue for every meal.
Oh, okay, all right.
It will be.
Thank you.
I have a question too, Neil. So, the families that normally apply for that, they are still supposed to, correct? Or do they not have to?
I'm not sure. I think they don't have to because I think it is universal, but I would have to check and get back to you on that.
Okay.
We do encourage families to do so because that measure of free and reduced lunch is a metric used for other indicators that we have to apply for or for other projects that we might want to do.
But that's kind of why I was wondering, I know it's from the USDA, so it's across the country, so I didn't know if probably everybody's will be off if not everybody is filling it out like normal. But yeah, I was kind of curious about that. Thank you. Any other questions?
One question, for the consent items, did we do B and C on there? The CPS and CSC recommendations and personnel actions in that same one?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I was a little flustered, sorry.
That's okay. Next on the agenda, we have superintendent information. Dr. Wiles?
Thank you. First, I just want to report on our summer programs. This week marks the end of our extended school year program at Gilderland Elementary School. This program, once again, was offered to our students in person. I want to give thanks to our pupil Personnel Services Director Lisa Knowles and our extended school year principal Steve Wolfe, as well as all of the ESY faculty and staff who took part in the program. We were able to offer six half-day classes and six full-day classes, serving a total of 98 students over a six-week period. We also offered a three-week summer program for ENL students that ended on July 23rd. Eighty-five students were able to take advantage of this remote learning opportunity. Also, Farnsworth Middle School offered in-person summer school, and we had 60 students who attended. And last but not least, the high school students were also able to attend a remote summer school program, and we had 103 students who participated in that. And I also wanted to add, I had an email from Dr. Bev Biznet that on Friday of this week, the butterflies will be released from the butterfly garden at 11:00. And she wanted me to extend an invitation to all board members who might be available at that time. It's quite a sight. The students are looking forward to showing what they learned, and they're hoping to come and visit one of our board meetings soon, but.
Is, so the butterfly exhibit is still open?
Yes.
Okay, and it's what, 10:30 to?
Twelve, 12:30.
Is it Friday or Thursday?
Friday.
I think it's 10 to 12.
Okay. I just, if I went at 11, it would still be open. Okay.
Eleven is good.
My next item is on the opening of school. We've already heard quite a bit about this. I will summarize. So earlier this week, we sent a letter to all district families and staff to give some updates about the plans for the opening of the 2021-2022 school year. Our highest priority is to provide in-person instruction to all students, K-12, all day, every day. And a key piece for us being able to do that is the change in guidance from a six-foot social distancing to a three-foot social distancing guideline. As you'll recall, when we were at six feet, we needed to move our fifth graders to the middle school, and our eighth graders to the high school, and our seven through 12 students could not come to school each and every day. So this change to three weeks, three feet, is a tremendous change for us. By doing so, we need to be extra careful with other prevention mitigating strategies. You heard a lot about the very first one, following the guidance of the CDC and the American Academy for Pediatricians. We will be practicing universal indoor mask wearing for all students and staff regardless of vaccination status. School buses require, riders on school buses are required to wear masks, that is a federal law across the United States at this time. We'll continue to encourage hand washing and respiratory etiquette. We'll encourage folks to stay home when they have any signs of illness, and to seek out healthcare and testing if necessary. We will be doing contact tracing in combination with quarantine and isolation. We'll continue to work with the Albany County Department of Health on those decisions. We will do our ongoing cleaning and disinfecting, and we'll continue to monitor the community transmission, vaccination coverage, occurrence of outbreaks to guide future decisions about the level of other prevention strategies. This is a rapidly changing set of circumstances. We continue to monitor it, but our top priority is the safety of all of our children and faculty and staff. So the letter also asked families to consider participation in a vaccination clinic that we would like to sponsor in collaboration with Gilderland EMS. We're hoping folks will take advantage of that. And then finally, we asked families to tell us if they would have need for fully remote instruction due to underlying medical concerns, and we're gathering information on that as well. We will be participating with the Capital Region BOCSIs in their fully remote instructional model. So there is still a great deal more planning to happen. We're meeting weekly with our leadership team. We have a recovery, we used to be the reopening steering committee, but we've renamed it the recovery steering committee. They meet every week. So we do have stakeholder groups who are collaboratively assisting us in development of plans in consultation with the experts who surround us. And then last but not least, we are getting ready to open school, and there are many, many activities planned. The first day, which is opening day for our staff, is Wednesday, September 1st. At this time, we're planning, we're still working out the details, but to bring everyone together in our large gym, but to set the gym up so we can practice social distancing in that room with all the bleachers, chairs on the floor, and so on. We'll be working out those plans. We'll also be welcoming our kindergarten students, and the details of that will come from each building as we get closer to the start of school. Middle school, we have several orientations. Middle school has a new student orientation. This is a combination of virtual orientation during the evenings. Once student placement is determined, and some self-guided tours will also be available. The dates are getting fine-tuned as we speak. At the high school, we have new student orientation on August 23rd and 25th, and the high school will also be holding a virtual Google Meet with an insider's guide to GHS. And on August 24th and August 26th, the high school will be hosting private tours. And then for incoming ninth graders, we have an in-person orientation on September 2nd. Actually, all students are welcome to walk through their schedule, but this is particularly important for the incoming ninth graders. And there'll be additional special events for incoming freshmen, grade 10 through 12 new students and grade 10 through 12 returning students. And the first day of class is one month from yesterday, Thursday, September 9th. So lots going on.
Marie, will the board be invited to the first day?
Yes, you will. Yes.
Yeah, I know, some people hadn't gotten to do that yet, so.
Yes. Well, we were all remote last year. So, assuming we pull it all together to be in person, and I'm pretty sure we can do that, so it's September 1st, we start at 8:15, or thereabouts. I'll send you a.
Rebecca, you had a question?
I just wanted to say, I'm really worried that the board will allow us to support this multi-layered protection approach, and then just a small edit. It's the American Academy of Pediatrician.
It is, yes. I saw it as I was reading it.
Okay.
Leave it to the pediatrician.
Yes. We'll correct that in the minutes.
I wondered if you noticed that.
I just have one question. I know, I don't know if you had probably even time to really talk about it yet, because the state had put out that notice, I think it was only right before the meeting, about following whatever guidelines.
Yes, so we got a letter from the commissioner, I think it was yesterday morning, that they too will be putting out health guidelines, even though that's not their typical role, but in the absence of guidelines from the New York State Department of Health, they will be doing that. And they've signaled that they too will be using CDC and the American Academy of Pediatricians, so we'll be looking for that. Ben?
Will high school students be able to, or I guess at any building, I only know the situation at high school, like, use the library and have lunch in the cafeteria and those sorts of things?
The short answer is yes. We're trying to have the school year look as normal as possible, but there are some nuances that we are working through to try to increase social distancing and keep students spaced. So I don't have a ton of detail on that now, but the high school team is working on that. It may be, you know, students sit at assigned tables, because the issue is going to be, if we have a positive case or when we have a positive case, we're going to need to be able to identify who is in proximate contact, for how long, whether or not they're vaccinated, as I understand that your vaccination status will have an impact on whether or not you're quarantined, if you are close contact. So all of those things will come into play and make this pretty complicated to sort through all year.
Actually, Maria, one more question?
Yep.
Is the school going to offer any testing?
That's another topic. We actually have several hundreds, if not more, of the rapid tests from last spring. Those are still, I think, good through middle of the fall, so that's another option. Albany County's also received a sizable federal grant to support testing in Albany County, and I know we've been in conversations with Elizabeth Whalen and her team about what that could look like. So that's still in the works.
Thank goodness we have, can anybody hear me? Thank goodness we have the support of Albany County or the guidance. We have such a good relationship with them. I'm super appreciative of that. I will say that I'm disappointed. I feel like New York State TOH really dropped the ball here.
All right. In terms of our students with special needs, are we going to work on, you know, addressing some of the mask issues with, you know, testing and stuff like that? Some things that just can't be done with masks on, you know, whether it's a something.
So, we just wrapped up, or will, on Friday, our extended summer school, our extended school year program for students with disabilities. And we have been able to work through all of those challenges. So if, for example, a student is getting speech services, we have masks where the mouth is actually visible so that children can see that. If, you know, masks have to come off in order for the work to actually happen, we practice social distancing and, you know, try to take as many mitigating precautions as we can while still engaging students fully in their program. And, you know, our special ed staff has just done a phenomenal job adjusting.
The other question, because I haven't been here, the stakeholder groups that you're, the stakeholder groups that you're referencing before, does that include parents? I just, because I don't know, didn't know anything about them.
So last year, we had a, we called it a reopening committee, and we had several subcommittees, because we literally had to start from scratch. We had to rebuild. You name it, we had to rebuild it. And those were, each subcommittee was about 20 people, and they did include some parents. We did not reinstate all of those committees this year because we're not really rebuilding. We're going back to K-12, 180 days of instruction in school, following normal instructional models, but with health and safety mitigation standards. But, you know, I thought the suggestion was not a bad one. We did have a health and safety subcommittee. Tomorrow morning, our recovery group is meeting, and I'm going to suggest, maybe, maybe there's a couple of those subcommittees who could reconvene to do some work along the way, because we're not done by any stretch of the imagination. We're still working through what opening will look like.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next on the agenda, we have action items. First is school business. Neil.
Thank you. First item this evening is a resolution to approve agreements with Hillcrest Academy Living Resources and St. Catherine's Center for Children for the upcoming school year.
Can I have a motion to approve these service agreements? Judy, second Kelly. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to approve private transportation contract extensions with two vendors, Durham School Services and Rajah Group LLC.
Can I have a motion to approve the contract extension? Blanca, second Ben. Any questions or comments?
This, oh, I'm sorry. I had a question. Oh, go ahead Judy. And I don't know if it should be now or later on, but the bus driver situation, those buses are taken care of, right? For the special schools, or are we still?
Yes, so we routinely have had a combination of our own drivers driving students, as well as some private contractors driving students. Typically, the private contracts have been more for private parochial schools and students with disabilities. Students come from all over and they go to centralized locations, so it's sometimes easier for a private contractor to do that than it is for us to do that. So we've had contracts for years with these two providers, and by law, we're able to extend those contracts by CPI clause that's under the administration of New York State. So they set the rate of increase that those contracts can increase by each year. We still have a need for those services, so we just reach out to those vendors and say, are you interested in continuing? If so, we know what the rate is, and these two vendors responded and said they did want to continue, so.
Okay. Then do we get into where we don't have enough drivers? Is that in the next part?
It can really be in any.
What do we do if we don't have enough drivers?
Well, we're working on that. I think everybody is probably aware, and if you've been watching the news, it's becoming more and more of a highlighted issue, a driver shortage across New York State, across the country. So it's, I was in vacation in Maine, and they were doing the same things we were here, trying to recruit drivers and having a bus with a big sign on saying, we need, we need school bus drivers. So it's not just in New York State. Recently, there was a webinar that New York State Association of Pupil Transportation put on, Cherry Keenan, our Assistant Transportation Supervisor, was part of that, but it was across the state, and was really talking about the issue the school districts were facing. And statistically, and they did some outreach to the school districts, over half of the schools consider themselves to be in a dire situation in terms of drivers. So this certainly helps to have private contractors returning to help out with those runs. Coming up, we're going to look at another award where we didn't get the kind of response that we typically get from vendors. We did reach out to those vendors and say, you know, why did you not choose to bid this year? And the answer was universally the same, is we don't have enough drivers, so we can't commit to doing something when we know we don't have the staffing to be able to do that. We're fortunate, we've been able to recruit a few drivers lately. We have returning drivers, but we're trying to look at ways to mitigate that. Right now, we're looking at arrangements with other school districts to try to provide transportation. So if we have kids going to Latham, private parochial schools, North Colony Shaker has kids coming down to one of the Albany academies, can we meet somewhere and, you know, take our kids one way, they take their kids, we do a swap, they take those kids on, and we take the kids out. So we're looking at trying to do this north, south, east, and west, you know, Skenigdene County, and who do we have over in, you know, East Green Bush, that area across River Rensselaer County? We have some schools over there, you know, north it's Latham, and south it's Albany. So seeing if we can work out some of those arrangements. We're working on, it's work in progress. It does require a lot of coordination to be able to do that, but we're in the process of looking at routes now. We also have opt-outs. We're asking parents to let us know if they're going to opt-out of transportation, so that could have an impact as well. So our staff is hard at work trying to put all those options together to see if we can cover those runs.
And has our new transportation coordinator started yet?
Yes, he has. He's trial by fire.
Yeah, but he would have that probably anywhere.
Yes, it, yeah, it's universal. This is not a Gilderland problem in terms of lack of bus drivers. This is regional, statewide, nationwide.
Yeah, no, I know. I just was hoping we had enough that we could have snuck in.
Yep, he snuck in at the beginning of August and jumped in with both feet. But I give credit to our staff, they're hard at work really trying to figure this out and trying to make, trying to engineer the runs, to try to make sure we can pick up all the kids with the staffing that we have. So it's a challenge, though.
I have a quick question too, Neil, about the, and I'm assuming that we wouldn't have busing for this, like, the early morning activities that might be offered for middle school students before school starts, that that would be drop-off, like, not, no busing is available for that, correct?
Well, we haven't closed the door on anything yet, but certainly, there's some of those programs and services where we're going to have to take a hard look at whether we have, I mean, our core mission is to get children to school, and that's what we have to do first of all. And then we'll look beyond that if we're able to, but certainly creates more of a challenge, obviously, when we have other activities to provide transportation for as well as our own students.
Do we have any idea of how many people might opt-out? Have we started that process?
We have, we have very limited data. I think we have 300 or so.
And we had, we had a huge number last year, didn't we?
Right, so the numbers early on is not as large as it was last year, but we're early in that process of having parents indicate whether they would be requesting transportation or not, so.
Neil, do people, I remember opting out, or I don't remember what I did, but I, I know it was through e-school, correct?
Yes.
So do parent, are they notified to go to e-school and do that?
Yes.
Okay, I just forgot.
We'll probably need to send some reminders.
It was like, in the thing that announced to the, on Friday, so it came out on Thursday, saying that on Friday, we were going to receive it, and we had to remember to do that, I think. It's kind of a tricky spot on e-school.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Thanks. Any other?
If I could find it, I mean, I found it. It took me a while, but I found it.
Same.
You found it, so.
I found it.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero.
Next comes up is a resolution to award the bid for private transportation service. We only had one respondent to that, and that was Rajah Group to All Saints Academy. So that's the recommendation for approval this evening.
Can I have a motion to approve the service bid? Nate, second Rebecca. Any questions or comments? Is this one that was going up again, Neil? Because.
No, this was.
Just one?
Just one. We had a number of routes that we asked vendors to bid on, number of schools, and they designed the routes as however they saw fit, but we sent it to nine vendors. As noted, we only received the one response for one school.
All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to confirm the tax rolls and authorize the tax levy. So I'll just share with you at this point, the tax rates that are being proposed. So for Gilderland, it's $17.36. For Bethlehem, it's $18.66, and this is per thousand. For New Scotland, it's $19.07. And for Knox, it's $34.72.
Can I have a motion to approve the tax levy? Both? Nate, second Judy. Any questions or comments?
It was good that it was so, you said it was only a couple of cents off of what you had predicted?
Correct, so we're very close to what we put out to the voters, particularly in the towns of Gilderland and New Scotland. Bethlehem ended up being a little bit higher, and Knox ended up being a little bit higher, and that's more of a function of what we call their equalization rates. So their property values in the town has declined over time. And in the way that, there's a formula that equalizes this amongst towns. So in order to collect the tax levy and do it in a manner that's fair in terms of its distribution, the process that's used is to use an equalization rate to get everybody's tax base, all four towns, up to 100%. So because of declining property values or equalization rates in Bethlehem and Knox, they have a higher increased, higher proportion assured because their property values dropped more than the other two towns. It's kind of a hard concept to understand, but it's kind of that, how do we equalize the values of all properties when everybody has a different equalization rate? Equalization rate being the market rate. So based on recent sales, are property values increasing, decreasing, or staying the same? So if assessments haven't kept pace with current market values, have a higher equalization rate, and that tends to lead to a higher tax increase as well.
Can I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry, all in, we already had a motion, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero.
I'm loading here. Next is a motion to confirm the tax warrant. So this is, my screen hasn't still loaded, so. Board needs to adopt a resolution issuing a tax warrant, and this commands the tax collector to collect taxes in the total sum amount of the tax levy authorized by the resolution that was just passed. So you can see in the tax warrant, the tax collection period is going to be again on September 1st, 2021. It will end on November 1st, 2021, so that is the period when taxes may be paid. The levies are noted in terms of the school tax levy and the library tax levy and the apportionment by town, which is what I was just talking about in terms of apportionment.
Can I have a motion to approve the tax warrant? Nate, second Gloria. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero.
Next, we have a resolution for an appropriation to reserve funds, and the resolution authorizes the funding of current reserves by the amount of unassigned fund balance exceeding 4% of the 2021-22 voter adopted budget.
Can I have a motion to approve the appropriation to reserve funds? Kelly, second Blanca. Any questions or comments? questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
Next, we have several transfers. In total, it's 490,101 dollars, and they're noted in detail in your materials.
Can I have a motion to approve the general fund transfers? Rebecca, second Gloria. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes eight zero.
And then finally this evening, we have a donation, and that's for various office supplies from Michael Connolly, CEO of Northeast Associates in Rehabilitation.
Can I have a motion to approve the donation? Kelly, second Rebecca. Any questions or comments? Just thank you for the donation from Michael Connolly. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Okay, thank you, Neil. Next, we have Superintendent Action Dr. Wiles.
I just have one item tonight, and that is the request to approve our Project Save Plan. It was before the board for a first read last month, and now it's up for action.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the Project Save Plan? Ben, second Rebecca. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we have Board President Action. I have three items. The first is the State Environmental Quality Review Act Resolution. This is a roll call vote. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Kelly, second Ben. Any questions or comments? That's alternative...
I just had a question.
Oh, go ahead, Rebecca.
Sort of related to what had been discussed earlier. Is this just the, the first version that we, we discussed last time? Or does this include the changes?
So this first one is the environmental piece, but the letter B is when we're going to have the option to make amendments to the bond act or to the proposal, and so we can change it then.
Okay.
So this, just letter A is just the Environmental Quality Review Act piece.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Can I have a, oh, sorry, we already had a motion. All in, oh, no, we're doing a roll call. Sorry. Go ahead, Linda, sorry.
Dr. Butterfield?
Aye.
Mr. Goes?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez-Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Person?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrin?
Aye.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tollhout?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes eight zero. Thank you, Linda. Next, we have a resolution calling for the special district meeting on October 7th. This is also a roll call vote, and this is where we need a motion to first discuss, we need a motion and a second to discuss the proposed bond resolution, and then we can make amendments from there. Can I have a motion for the, the, the resolution? Thank you. Go ahead. Blanca, second. Judy, any questions or comments? This is where Rebecca, if we want to ask more details about the proposal.
Make amendments.
Are these the documents that?
Yes. So, so where we're starting from, and this is working with our bond council, we're starting with the materials that were provided, provided in the previous meeting. So you all have in front of you this district-wide analysis and prioritization. That's the work of the Facilities Committee that was, was done over the summer and brought to the board and discussed. So that's the revised total at the bottom, the 17.4 million is what was presented before, and that's what's included in the bond proposition at this point in time as a starting point. Then, in addition to that, you are all provided with this document, which had some additional items for consideration, for the board's consideration, which you also received and discussed at the last meeting. So that can also, that's also part of this conversation, if you want it to be part of this conversation. So those two documents. So really, the plan at this point is, with the floor now open, there can be conversation about making adjustments to that number, the 17.4 million, by either adding or deleting items that are shown on these sheets. Each one of those would need to have its own motion and a second to discuss, and then a vote on that particular adjustment. And then multiple motions can be made following that. So that's really the process until we get to a final point where there are no motions for adjustments. And then wherever we're at, that would be the number that would then replace the number in this resolution if it's different at that point in time.
Thank you so much for clarifying that.
So do we make, we have to make a motion to have a discussion?
Yes. We have to make a motion if we want to make an amendment to, to add any of these or to take away, and then we have to have a second and then discuss it, and then Neil can add or subtract, correct?
Correct.
Rebecca?
So I make a motion to add an amendment of the GHS FMS Priority One with Cooling Edition, along with the GHS LES Cooling Edition, for the reasons that we discussed at the last meeting.
So for the, did you say, I'm sorry, the cooling?
The, on page three, page three of three.
Oh, page three, okay.
Underneath the current proposed project, the 17 million, there are two additional line items, which I think, Neil, correct me if I'm wrong, are summative of what's on pages one, two, through three.
Yes, if you're on page three at the bottom?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why not Pembush two?
I'm sorry, what?
Why not, why not all the elementary schools?
I, I, yeah, both lines.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought, I only heard you say one or two. Okay.
Yep, lines two and three.
Yeah, so just to confirm, Rebecca, the two line items at the bottom of page three, the 215,000 change and the 4.1 million and change, you want to add those? That's your motion?
That's my motion.
And the two, so all of it in yellow essentially together?
Correct. That would be my motion.
So with a second, Nate?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, well. Any questions or comments about this?
What's the total, the grand total?
It's...
Twenty-one point seven.
So if we include Rebecca's amendments, then it would be twenty-one, seven, six, three.
The yellow.
And so what the regular project is right now is seventeen, four, forty-two, et cetera.
And it includes a turn field.
Yes. And I just want to confirm, this is including the playgrounds?
Yes.
And that outdoor education?
Sorry, just wanted to check. And the outdoor education spaces, those are...
They're here.
Those are ones that can be reimbursed, or they are reimbursed by those federal dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
So that, I guess, do we, do we need to vote on adding that?
Yes, we're going to vote on it, but if you have any questions or comments about Rebecca?
Well, I'm just, the, so the twenty-one point seven and change, what we're at right now, or, well, that we've discussed, that number could go down depending on how much federal funds we want to put towards the project, to the extent we can put it towards the project.
Right. So what's important here is what we're approving in terms of a maximum dollar amount that we could possibly buy and borrow money for. We know that federal funding is out there, and we believe that that federal money can go to certain projects related to indoor air quality, ventilation, so on, outdoor classroom spaces. What we found in filling out the applications for the federal funding, though, is it does require approval of the New York State Education Department for any construction projects. So the resolution does have language in there, already talking about the application of federal funds, but it's not specific in terms of the amount, because we need to work through that process with the state. So we'll have a recommendation that we'll give to the state saying we want to use federal funds for this type of work, they're going to have to approve that, then we can apply the federal funding. So provided all of that happens, what we will end up being able to do is borrow less than the total amount of the authorization. So we have a maximum amount of the authorization, and then we'll end up talking about what will we actually have to borrow, and hopefully we'll have those federal funds, so it's cash on hand. We can avoid having to pay interest on borrowed money for 15 years by having that federal money, it'll be cash on hand, and we can pay right up front for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Passes eight zero. So we, floor is still open for any other amendments?
This, yeah, I have...
Go ahead, Judy.
So is this, and I'm sure this is a question that I should know the answer to, but is this just priority ones, or are we getting into twos and threes with this?
In the number that's been approved so far, it's not priority one or two. So we do have language in the resolution that we've had in other projects, which allows, if they're not included as part of the project, but by showing them on this sheet, there's language that recognizes that this sheet exists, and the board will have the ability, should the project be completed for less than the anticipated estimated cost that we have right now, to be able to go back and look at items that are in those categories and elect down the road to say, you know, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars, we would like to, the board would have to agree to do this, we would like to pick that, an item or two off of this chart and be able to add that to the project. So we have that authority in advance to do that, and it's up to the board down the road whether they want to exercise that right to pick up additional projects that aren't included in the amount that's being approved tonight.
So none of the bathrooms, like, this is from the district-wide analysis, like on the last page for Farnsworth, under P1, others, I don't know, list of bathroom renovations, and then also at, Pine Bush, no, Pine Bush, just, uh, Gilderland, sorry, oh, also Altamont Plumbing Systems, et cetera, those are not included.
And then would we just approve those priority ones in Farnsworth?
All the bathrooms, though?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see it in green.
Yeah, all, yeah, we do have priority ones in there, yeah.
I see it in green, sorry.
All the priority ones are on this sheet. You can see, and they all say priority ones, ventilation, bathrooms.
I was just looking, what else?
Windows, bathroom.
So we guess that this is priority two, those are not getting done.
Yes.
They're highlighted.
Unless, as Mr. Sanders just said, we get down the road to some point and there's additional resources that we could look at those at that point.
Where does it leave us with the air conditioning? Sorry, I missed, I missed last, let me solve discussion last.
That's what Rebecca's motion was, was like to complete the air conditioning.
So that, that would complete air conditioning and all the?
No.
No, it's... Okay, I'm like, wait a second.
Every room except.
Thank you, Cliff.
Be close to that microphone.
Thanks, Cliff.
Yeah, make sure Teresa can hear me.
No, that does not complete the air conditioning across the school district. It completes the air conditioning for the units that we identified as priority ones. Part of this exercise with the priority ones, we focused on the high school, the middle school, there's some in here for Linwood, but it was really around HVAC work, windows and bathrooms. Those were the three hot topics that this separate document focuses in on, and then we went. So any HVAC unit that we listed there, we also listed separately what it would cost to add cooling while we're putting those units in. So no, this does not air condition the entire school district.
It's what, about half, is it?
Or over half, because what this will do is, this is, this includes DX, so it's built-in units.
Yeah.
So that's actually better. I mean, the window units work, DX works better.
Yeah.
So it just puts us at more efficiency. I mean, overall, like we talked last time, when we finish the middle school next summer, the second floor will have DX, we'll move those window units downstairs. Technically, we'll have, that building will be 100 percent next year.
But not perfectly the way we, you know, not with the...
No, I mean, we chip away as we go. I mean, and that's why I separated that DX cost out, so people could actually see. It's not, it is costly. It's, you know, it's something we'll just chip away on as we go forward.
Thank you.
I think we should, like, stop.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Blanca.
I don't think we should add anymore. I don't think we should add anything else. Can you hear me?
So is your motion to not do anything?
I don't know. I, I think we shouldn't add more money, is what I'm trying to say. I think that's enough.
Does anybody else have motions or amendments that they would like to add, change, et cetera? Also, this is also a roll call vote, correct, Linda?
Yes.
Okay, so are we ready to do that? Yep, okay.
Dr. Butterfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goes?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez-Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Person?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
Mrs. Tollhout?
Yes.
Okay, passes eight zero. Thank you. Next, we have, I need a resolution to establish the voter registration dates and locations for the October 7th, 2021 bond referendum vote. I'm just going to read the, the referend, the, the details here. Whereas, the Gilderland Central School District Board of Education is required to set by resolution the time and location of personal voter registration dates to be held not more than 14 days, more or less, than five days before the October 7th, 2021 bond referendum vote. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Ed pursuant to the applicable law establishes the 28th, 29th, 30th, from 8:30 a.m. till 2:30 p.m. at the following locations, Altamont Elementary, Gilderland Elementary, Linwood Elementary, Westmere Elementary and Pine Bush Elementary for the personal registration for said bond referendum vote. Additionally, any person with otherwise entitled to vote at said bond referendum vote may register at the Gilderland Central School District offices, 8 School Road, on September 28th, 29th and 30th between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Can I have a motion? Ben? Second Rebecca. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Okay, thank you, everybody. Next, we have Board Committee Report. I'll start with Audit, because I know we're going to be meeting at 8 a.m., and so I will see you. I think it's Kelly, Rebecca and myself. Next, we have Communications. We're working on a date. We're trying to trouble. Okay. Business practices? We don't have anything set up yet. Okay. So you're working on a date, or you will be at some point?
We will be at some point.
Yeah, it's totally, depending on... And then importantly, I guess, Communications. Did I just say that?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, which one am I forgetting?
Policy.
Policy. Oh, that's why Barb's not here, policy.
We, we do not have a meeting scheduled yet.
Okay. And then the Equity and Inclusion meeting, I think, is at the end of August, Kelly, do you remember?
September 22nd.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Ben. End of September? Okay. Next, we have Public Comment Number Two. We move on to Board Issues, Ideas and Sharing.
Do we have any other letters we haven't read?
Uh, yes, for Public Comment?
It might be good to, I mean, the people sent the letters.
To finish reading them?
Yeah. Sure. We got interrupted.
I'm just trying to go back and see. I think I was at number seven.
I think you were too.
We probably did the three-minute thing for them, too, so you can...
Yeah.
Yeah, she was. Yes, I was, she was.
We've been reading the letters and...
Yep.
Let me just make sure.
Oh, I've got your...
I thought you started one, then finished it.
Do you have a timer again, Lynn, or does anybody? Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll start. This is from Melissa Dover. To whom I concern, my children are students in the Gilderland Central School District, and I'm writing today to express my strong support for only the full and minimum reopening of schools based on our actual science and data within our school buildings, our community and district at large. I'm calling on you to put forward a plan that falls in line with reasonable and least restrictive guidelines as it pertains to specific infection data in our schools, i.e. actual cases and actual in-school student-to-student transmission and other relevant data. Gilderland did an excellent job last year navigating an ever-changing set of rules and guidelines from our governor, our state DOH and our unelected CDC officials, while still doing the best job possible to educate our children. Both the students and staff of our schools remained safe and children were able to continue to receive instruction. But the quality of education was not at the degree we have come to expect from Gilderland. Instead, whether they be fully virtual students, hybrid or full in-person instruction, all students suffered severe educational setbacks. Many received passing grades just for attending a minimum work or effort. Those that needed the most help, IEPs, et cetera, received only a portion of what they needed. ESL students suffered through masking requirements even while six feet apart with limited breaks, all reducing the quality of their English learning abilities. And especially our youngest kindergartners through second and third graders, many received, many needing varying degrees of help, with speech development did not receive it, through full masking while six feet or more apart. While we all grappled with strict guidelines throughout the 21, 20, 20, 21 school years, locally, nationally and worldwide, there are many places, counties, states and entire countries where such restrictive combinations of mitigation methods were not employed. Many did not mandate masks indoors. Internationally, six-feet distance was...
Internationally, six-feet distance was unheard of, because WHO recommended one meter, which is just a tad over three feet. And both community and in-school spread did not occur in any statistically significant way when compared to those country-states or counties that did impose strict mask requirements. And those areas were at least able to maintain not only the expected quality of educational outcomes, but to also minimize the tragic emotional stresses upon their children that is heavily documented through the United States, whether elementary or high school secondary levels. I understand that many within the Gildan community are fully on board with continued and stringent mitigation measures. I am not one of them, and many more are behind me. There are no robust studies showing efficacy that, that a piece of cloth on a five-year-old will do any good in eliminating or even reducing spread. But there exists plentiful data and research available that proves it is not only an extension of a barrier to proper quality child education, but also may have severe negative health impacts, impede attention capacity, elevate emotional and so, and social stress and anxieties, and lead to long-term developmental problems, both emotional.
Thank you, Linda. The next public comment is from Alexandra Indino Mitziros.
Dear Dr. Wiles and Board of Education, as the school year approaches and New York, and New York State has made it clear they would not provide the same level of guidance for the 2021 school year, I would like to rely my concern as a parent and educator. Last year, my child who attended GES completed first grade virtually due to the fact that I'm immunocompromised. This was an extremely difficult decision for our family, because as an educator, I know nothing can replace the four walls of our classroom. We are forever grateful for the efforts of their teachers, Mr. Godelin and Mrs. Bartlett. This year, as the Delta variant has now become dominant and local numbers are starting to slowly creep upwards, we know that the infection rate among children is also rising. This will undoubtedly become an issue. While our children are not eligible to be vaccinated against COVID at this time, it is imperative that masks be included as part of an effort to mitigate the spread of the virus, as we observed from our own classrooms how masks have had an impact. We must remember that this is temporary. As a teacher, I would love to see my students smile each morning, but I would also rather know that we have done everything to keep them as safe as possible, and that we can complete the school year in our classrooms without the need for another mandatory shutdown and remote school year, all of which is much more difficult than wearing a mask. Thank you for your consideration. As we are about to send the above email, we received your communication regarding masks. We are so grateful, we are part of a community that cares about their students and teachers. We know that there will be naysayers, but to know that the Gildan Board of Ed is putting safety above ignorance is applaudable. Thank you again.
The next public comment is from Meg Fitzpatrick.
Dear Gildan School Board, I am speaking to you as a recent EHS graduate, current college senior studying pre-med biology, and current healthcare worker regarding the debate on the mask policy during the upcoming school year, specifically pertaining, pertaining to special needs students. As I said previously, I'm a Gildan grad, but not only that, I'm a special needs student that graduated from Gildan. I want you to know how appalled I was to learn that the special needs students were being used as a tool to further the anti-vax, anti-mask agenda. The masks are not distracting to special needs students in the educational setting. I sat through college-level courses as a special needs student with a mask on, and it was not disturbing nor distraction from learning. Wearing a mask in a classroom actually relieved a lot of anxiety I had about going to school during the pandemic. It was actually, it was incredibly scary returning to in-person learning, but having it mandatory for all students to wear masks indoors made me feel a lot safer. There was no distress or anxiety or, quote, psychological damage caused by wearing a mask during the day. Masks don't make it harder to learn, but how, but do you know what does? Being sick or dying of COVID. I consider those to be a much larger, larger threat to the learning environment than having to wear a mask for a couple of hours. Using special needs students as a pawn in a political agenda is disgusting and immoral. You should be ashamed that you are using this excuse of threat to our learning environment to hide behind your ignorance and cowardice. Masks and vaccines work. Listen to science and stop using special needs students as your scapegoat. Sincerely, an autistic student who is tired of being spoken for instead of listened to.
The next public comment is from George Kachowski.
Hello, I would like to vote, voice support for masks and vaccinations for teachers in our schools and for commensurate. Precautions for students. Sure, there are COVID deniers in Gildan, but pandemic response has to be in all-hands collaboration, all-hands collaboration. With variants being generated cyclically, not taking a unified stand to eliminate COVID-19 quickly would be foolhardy. Warm regards, George Kachowski.
The next public comment is from Heather Brennan.
Dear Superintendent and Board of Education, the community has not provided, has not been provided credible justification or response from our school officials in determining whether masks will be required at a school. Rather, we are told that our school officials are following, with those of higher powers, Governor Cuomo, et cetera, CDC have told them to implement for the safety of our community. If masks are required at any time from the start of the school year, school officials will be forcing children to comply with medical interventions granted emergency use authorization by the FDA during COVID-19. What does this mean? It means as a medical purpose to assist in mitigating and preventing the spread of infectious materials, school officials would require the mouth and nose of a child be covered with an unapproved medical device, with an unapproved, unclear use without informed consent. There are no long-term safety trials or clinical studies for daily use by children. The reality is that since March 2020, due to the unprecedented circumstances, our country and state have administered a rapid response to the universal implementation of face masks without any differentiation between adults, adolescents, and children. It was apparent that the moral reason to obtain free and voluntary informed consent prior to administering a medical intervention was outweighed. Most of us, myself included, complied without sufficient understanding so that our children could receive in-person education. However, things are different now. We have sufficient understanding. There's existing data to establish children, that masking children is unnecessary and harmful. There's plenty of evidence of the negative effects of the immunological and psychological level of forcing children and adolescents to wear a face mask which outweighs the potential gains. School officials throughout New York have been granted the ability to make decisions for their district. If masks are required, it can be assumed that our school officials feel it is morally permissible to carry out our non-consensual medical interventions using compulsory or coercive measures for the purpose of infection-disease control. It is one of the most valuable rights our children have under the Constitution, the right to receive a free and public education. Choices regarding health are a civil right grounded in bodily autonomy, dignity, and privacy of the, of the individual. The profound lack of dignity, privacy, autonomy, and treatment of children under the age of 12 who are ineligible for a medical intervention under EUA is appalling and discriminatory. The civil right to bodily autonomy with respect to particular act, if it is carried out, must be with intervention, with intention, understanding, and without controlling influences that determine the action. There is no law requiring masks, nor is there a law preventing masks optional. As concerned parents, we are requesting answers to the following. Data that provide proof in which masks benefit the children in our district physically and medically, proof that masks cause no harm to students emotionally.
And the last public comment, this is from April McAllister.
Dear Gildan Board of Education, thank you for leaving my comment allowed in my absence. First and foremost, I am an American citizen and of one nation under God. I'm a concerned mother of many elementary-age children, including two of my very own. It is my hope to help stand up for all parents who are afraid to. It is my hope to be heard so that our children don't have to suffer any longer wearing masks. It is my hope for our community to have a chance for a normal school year. It is my hope that the candidates on this board are willing to look at all of the science, not just the science that is funnelled through from the financial backing that funds these schools and the cost per child attendance that is received. Today is an intended tax meeting, correct? So shouldn't we be, so we shouldn't beat around the bush and pretend that our children don't bring value to the district? Where will funds come from if children are slowly pulled from public schools and brought into homeschooling? Homeschooling in changing districts are real solutions that parents in this district are contemplating. There's a significant amount of science that supports our desire to have children masked-free. Have you seen the school board meeting that recently, recently took place in Indiana? The video is attached below. All it takes in New York is one district to make a stand for those innocent children. Glover'sville has already taken a stand. Will Gildan even consider? Our district proved over the last year in summer that, and kept healthy comparatively, but it was at the expense of our children's educational and emotional needs. I urge you to consider the long list of side effects of these unlawful mandates. I'm reminded of why I moved here in the first place, that small-town field where everyone knows your name, a place where politics don't sweep away the quiet mom in the corner who wants to stand on her convictions, even if she has to stand alone. Gildan has an opportunity to be set apart and leave a ripple effect for generations to come. I plead with you, Gildan Board members, to remember that God gave authority regarding medical and educational decisions to the parents, and as long as we all honor the Constitution, we should have, we should not have to beg to maintain these God-given rights. Your decisions concerning our children will affect our decisions concerning your positions on the board in the future. We want the people to be heard. We, the people, should be allowed to practice free will. Why haven't you sent out a survey concerning these topics to gather parental input? We all received many surveys over the last year and a half where, when the, um, week-to-week COVID rules were ever-changing. The teachers' union do not support any of these mandates. They believe it should be an individual choice. We need a parents' union to fight the same rights. Our first step of being heard is through you. The state of emergency ended June 25th. In addition, the New York State Governor removed our statewide mandates, leaving recommendations and guidance at the hands of the CDC and AAP. Considering that all state, considering that all current statements include verbiage of guidance and recommended, it is evident to many of these remarks are not laws, they're constitutional. I think those are all the public comments. I emailed you. Did not get those. How many more, Linda? Two, I think I sent you. Okay. Okay. All right. I will, um, I'll start this one. This, this is from Kim Angus. To the Board of Ed, I would like to know how pleased I am on how Dr. Wiles keeps the parents of this school district updated during about, uh, I'm sorry, updated about what is going on during these times. I'm a mother of a senior and couldn't be any happier about the health and safety protocols that will be implemented in the fall. As a teacher in another district, I know the importance of getting all our kids back in person, learning, and ensuring that all are masked is one small sacrifice to make this happen. Sincerely, Kim Angus. And then the last, oh, no. Oh, wait, I have two more. Do you see that? One is from Steve.
Yeah.
And one is from Mike.
I'll check.
Yes.
I wasn't sure about that one, it doesn't say public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll read from Steve, sorry. This public comment, this last one is from Steve Chesley. Please find my original email and letter to the board below, which the board considered at the June 2021 meeting. I'm asking the board to consider again the position I took in light of the ever-increased, increasing COVID-19 numbers we are experiencing. I just don't believe it is wise to have the YMCA Ytime program mixing school populations at a time like this. The board should reconsider opening space at Linwood so that students can attend, I'm sorry, can enjoy aftercare where they attend class. Best, Steve Chesley. I think that is it now. Correct? Okay. All right, any other board comments, suggestions, ideas, sharing?
I just want to ask about the question someone mentioned that they couldn't find the, this meeting on the calendar. I didn't get a chance to check.
Yeah, I didn't check.
On the calendar, it literally, I think it's all the way through the end of the year.
It is on the calendar.
Okay. Well, it's on the website, it's on the meeting calendar, yeah.
Yeah. This was the original meeting we've always had. The 24th is a meeting we added.
For the bowls?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the 24th, it's 24th of August through November, December 15th, 2021. They're all on.
Okay.
All, all committee, regular board meetings.
I thought so.
Are the claims about Glover'sville and Niskiun true, or just Glover'sville? Does anyone know?
I know Glover'sville is true.
I, I spoke to my wife, who's in the Niski School District, and that she has not heard anything to, to that effect.
Okay.
Quite frankly, I would be surprised.
So I just have a general comment to whoever wants to listen. One of the, when I said that DOH dropped the ball, what I meant was that they've left it up to school boards to decide this. Now, we have a couple medically-trained folks on this committee, but that's rare across school boards. And so literally, they've just left communities who may not have anybody that really has a strong basis in public health to make decisions regarding public health. And I think that's highly irresponsible. Not to mention the fact that COVID one place is COVID every place. So we can do everything we want to keep our kids safe here, but at some point in time, we are going to be impacted by other communities who may not choose to do what we're doing and take these layered precautions. That's my concern.
I think that because State Ed now, you know, stepping up to.
Thank God.
Give us, um, something, I think, it would be wise to follow that. And like you, I'm kind of, I'm completely disappointed that we don't have Department of Health, um, supporting schools and kind of leaving it right now. And I feel like every day we get something new, like today, that was from State Ed. So I don't know what is today, August 10th.
Right.
So we have less than a month from when school starts. I just anticipate every day, every week, we'll hear some other things, but as of right now, I don't see why we would make any changes.
Okay. Totally agree with you. Another concern I have down the road is right now, we're basing everything on, everything on a three-foot distancing. This is more infectious, this mutation, right? So I'm wondering if at some point in time, well, we won't be throwing another curveball, which is like, oh, wait, we're back to six feet. I just want to put that out there, it's a what-if, it's plausible, but if it is more infectious, just like chickenpox, then the three feet may not hold. So I'm just putting that on everybody's radar.
Blanca, I'll jump in on that one, because I, um, you know, if we were to go from three to six feet, that is not an overnight change. But a lot of the guidance in both CDC and the, um, AAP talk about the relative risks of not having children in school. And so they've said three feet whenever possible. And that's why there's the strong recommendation to do all these layered mitigation.
Okay.
Approaches, because, um, I've, I've even seen statements that say, you're not going to be able to keep three-foot social distancing on school buses. Please don't use that as a reason to close schools. You won't be able to keep three-foot distance in cafeterias. Please don't use that as a reason not to open schools. Kids need to be in person for school. So, um, I, I, I hope that we don't move to a six foot, because that will put us back to where we were last year, which was difficult.
I certainly wouldn't want that, I'm just putting it on your radar.
Yeah, always there.
Everything I've read indicates that this is more contagious, so it wouldn't shock me if later on, we're at the beginning of the peak, you know? Later on, it's like, oh, here you go, try this.
I mean, at this point, I feel like we're choosing the, you know, the lesser of the evils that we have. None, none of this is good.
No.
So, you know, knowing that my friends in other states, even other parts of the, the state, but other states as well, where a lot of the, the kids did not go to school until the spring. I'm so grateful and thankful that our kids, um, can go to school in person. It was at least every-day case six last year. And I'm hoping that, you know, that they've done it this, this, you know, this past year, I know seven through 12 really struggled with the, the hybrid. I know for the student's side and for the teacher's side. And so if it means masks so they can go to school every day and see other people and see, you know, their classmates, I'm fully in support. I mean, I don't think any of us have a crystal ball to know what, how masks are going to impact, um, people in the future. I, I just know, you know, just personally, I can just speak that my kids wear them all the time.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I don't want to leave, I mean, I'm just, maybe it's the law I made, there was a lot of arguments made tonight, and I just don't want to leave them hanging out there. And I kind of took a cue from Ben, I did my own research, I knew it was going to come. So I, I, I just want, and I don't want to go point-by-point, but anybody who's watching this or listening to this, what you heard tonight, a lot of that is just, it's just not true. Do your research. Go on Google, this whole thing about carbon dioxide and kids can't get emotions because they have face masks, it's all been debunked. There's actual studies, data, people wanted data, that data's out there. I ask anybody who's watching this, people in this room, don't take everything at face value, you don't, don't take what I'm saying at face value, but go out there, do your You don't, don't take what I'm saying at face value, but go out there, do your research, do your time, because a lot of the stuff you heard tonight, fake news.
Yeah, we're a partner in the spread of disinformation this evening. We are. We let it take place at this public board meeting, so.
Well, I mean, that is part of the-
I, I know. I'm just saying, I'm acknowledging that that happened, and I'm not happy about it, but there's nothing, it seems, we could do. So thanks, Nathan.
There are times in the past where we've jumped in to make corrections to public comments when there was just something that was just said.
We didn't do that tonight.
No, but I don't think that, that is really, I'm not talking about in terms of like people's opinions about the masks, but there, for example, I didn't know, I couldn't speak to the calendar piece, for example, in the meeting. I was pretty sure, but I didn't want to just speak up, but I'm saying those are the kind of examples that we've jumped in and made corrections in the past.
Gotcha.
I think the issue with some of the stuff that was said, it's, it's based on debunked policies or debunked research. So you can't, it's not, they're not wrong, they're just, they haven't done the next step. They haven't taken that further step to confirm, you know, what is it?
Checking your source.
Checking your source, confirm what you're reading. And it is what it is, but I, I just want anybody who's watching this after the fact and thinking, we didn't listen and didn't hear it, that wasn't true, but please take the time to look these things up and just don't accept everything you hear at face value.
And just one other, I was just going to respond again to you, Blanca, about the public comment piece. I think that is one of like the great parts of like having public school and having public board meetings is that we're allowed to share our thoughts, which is why I felt like it was really, you know, it's challenging to, you know, to allow everybody to do that. But regardless of how impassioned you are about your own thoughts, you have to allow others. You know, just like I, you know, read letters and I, if I agree with them personally or not, you have to allow that to, to be exchanged.
And I'm not saying I don't want that, which is why I didn't interrupt that. What I'm saying, though, is that some people, just like Nathan tried to address, may take what they heard tonight as fact, and that continues this disinformation that is perpetuating this virus. It is a problem.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that is a problem all over.
I was just going to say, I think this dissent really underscores like the abdication of the D O H, right? Like, it's not up to school board members to be epidemiologists or microbiologists.
And they shouldn't be, yeah.
And they really shouldn't be, right?
Right.
So we are deferring to the experts, which in this case are the CDC and the A A P. And we wish that the D O H was also on that list.
Yes, exactly. I mean, the D O H kind of left everybody hanging and left us, all school boards across the state vulnerable to this, so.
It's reckless. It's going to result in the pandemic not being controlled. Go ahead.
Leaving aside the issue of COVID, I, I would just argue that, you know, this is a political question, what we're going to do to mitigate COVID. If you're like me and you believe that we will never mitigate COVID, for example, we're dealing with the Delta variant right now, which as best we can tell originated in India, right? So even if everyone here was vaccinated, apparently vaccinated people are spreading the Delta variant, and so we'd be dealing with COVID cases and COVID hospitalizations and COVID deaths. So I actually, you know, I, I think guidance would be helpful because from the lawyer perspective, it gives us someone to point to and say, well, this is kind of what we're going to base our guidelines on because we don't know better. But at the same time, you know, the, these parents, whether their data is right or wrong, they're bringing up real trade-offs, which public health professionals alone are not qualified to make those trade-offs for people. The economists will say that this costs us X amount of dollars for the economy. The public health officials will tell us, yeah, but that measure saved 350 people. Which one is worth more? That's political science. That's a political question. And so I actually do think that it's good that elective representatives are participating in these decisions now.
I hear your point. I do want to address one thing. So your point about how this is going to keep happening for years, I think this is a point you made, right? Okay. Part of that, part of the reason that's true is because we can't reach herd immunity because of this, this disinformation. In order for this thing to keep mutating, there need to be more cases of it. If we were to find a way to stop it cold, then it wouldn't keep mutating. So yes, you're probably right, we're going to keep doing that. But make no mistake, every single one of these decisions and every single case here, every, every little spreader, even though your own kid only feels like they have the sniffles, that's one more case and one more opportunity for mutation. So yeah, we are kind of up the creek because enough people aren't getting on board.
I, I, I would just say that coming from a, from a community of people that oppose some of these mandates, you know, there's a solid 25% of this country that won't get a vaccine unless you inject it in their arm.
Right, so they shouldn't complain about wearing masks.
And my feeling from them is that it's because they don't get a say, you know? And if we kind of left this more to politics instead of executive decrees, I, I think that we might have more buy-in from people. I mean, it's the same thing we go through, you know, with this G E S classroom change. I mean, we're going to support our teachers, we're going to support administrators, we're going to rely on CDC guidelines, but there's a difference between that and, and making people feel like they don't have a voice in what's going on in their own kids' lives. And so I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. If everyone did everything that they were supposed to do and the COVID cooperated, yes, we could, we could stamp it out, but that's not the situation.
I'm trying to be sympathetic to you and that 25%, but at this point in time, with four million lives gone, I'm less sympathetic. I really am.
And I'll, and I'll let this chime in. I agree with you, Ben, but we are the elected officials. We are the representatives. And it's not like any of us hid our politics to the extent we actually had to show politics when we got elected. I agree. All those people back there yelling at us, saying, oh, you're going to be gone in three years. I hope so, because that means somebody stepped up, and that's what you want to see. And if somebody wants to step up and they want to take their votes and they want to take their voice, and those people want to, please, they should do that. But that, we're here now because we got elected to be here and to make these decisions. We shouldn't have to make these decisions, but we, we are. So I agree, this is a political decision. We are making a political decision. And I, I agree that the 25% that were never going, they, they got a vote. If they took it, they used it. That's another question. The people that voted to put us here put us here, and we're making decisions because of those people that put us here. So I hear that, you know, we're, you know, this whole thing that, you know, they're not hearing a vote or they're not having a voice. I don't agree with that. They got their voice, they get their vote. We're here. We make decisions. We don't want to have to make that decision, but we are. So I appreciate that they're angry, and I hope that anger lasts. And people that want to come in here and challenge us and do that, I welcome because we need it. Because that's another voice that, that's going to be dissenting that we got to listen to. So I hope, I, you know, I know it's easy for me to say, I just got elected. I've only been here-
You got three years.
Two months.
(laughing)
I mean, a hot two months.
You're not even three years.
You've got ways to go there.
Yeah. I haven't even grown, you know, so it's easy for me to say. I realize that. I completely acknowledge that. But, you know, we are the elected officials. We are the elected representative voice.
I, I just want to say, I agree. I mean, every year when the, it's time to vote, I know there's several of us who have tried to encourage people to come, step up, and because it's much easier to sit at home or show up once in a while and complain. So, you know, I implore anybody who wants to be involved to get involved, and none of us are paid. This is all volunteer time. We are crazy for some reason in volunteering our time for this. I mean, it's important. Obviously, I would, I could say for everybody here is passion and, and cares about school and students, so I feel like that's why we're all here. And like you said, Nate, like, we had a choice, and there are choices of being involved and not being involved, and there are also choices of sending your kids to school, using B O C's and doing a remote. There, there's not absolutely no choice. I know that was the impression that was made tonight, and that's not true. Of course, I think it would be better for students to be in person here at a public school. I'm a opponent of public schools. That's why I'm here, but there's not no choice. That's just not true.
And I just want, this other thing, that there's no evidence that masks work. I mean, I, what I would say is, look at our school year. That's the evidence that I point to. It's the point that my kids never complained about wearing. I mean, as Seema said, my kids will wear a mask all day. And they would forget. I mean, we're sitting at home, it's dinner time. Hey, can you take the mask off now? It's time to eat. So, but that's beside the point. The point, the evidence is that we had, we, unlike a lot of other schools and a lot of other districts, were able to have full-time in-person for the majority of our school, and we had very few lost days. And when we did, it was primarily because we didn't have the staff. It wasn't because students are sick and we had the spread. It's because we lost the staff. So that's what I point to is saying, masks work. Kids never complained. I don't think there's been a single instance that I'm aware of, and I've got, again, I'm not, I haven't been on the board, of a student being sick from our district because they were wearing a mask all day. I'm sorry. I, I, trust me, I don't want to wear a mask. It's inconvenient. It's hot, especially in days like today. But it works, and history has shown it to work.
Yeah, if it didn't work, right, Rebecca, we wouldn't wear them in the healthcare field. If we were giving ourselves pneumonia, bacterial pneumonia, or inhaling CO2 all day long, that, and it was toxic, then we wouldn't be wearing them in the field, and we are. And it's protecting us so we can take care of patients and vaccinate them. Anywho.
Any other comments or questions? I just have one other comment, it's not related to COVID, but in two weeks, we have a board meeting that is of goals, and so I will try and send that document out before. So if you don't see it, or if you have anything, you can feel free to email, but that's, I think, what the main part of, or the main focus of that next August meeting is.
We are hoping to do some business, though. I think we'll have some personnel action items that will be timely before the start of the school year.
Great.
And don't forget everyone to do your evaluation.
So I have a motion to adjourn? Nate, Second, Blanca, all in favor?
Aye.
I pass this, eight zero. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.